To start with, the mayor actually said so publicly that she's not going to be herself. Fortunately, you can't hear it. I'm councillor in the delts, I'm captain now this year. So I'll be telling you the best possible way to keep yourself in the public. So the third item on the agenda is welcome for the mayor of Ross County. Obviously, of course, he's not been, but she has sent a letter for me to bring out on her behalf. David Clark, we're going to sign it into the freezer. But there will be a commentary that will... Yeah, we need to go to the end of the show. Like, this is all here to be there. It's a nice way to go. Absolutely. So this is a letter from the mayor, which says, "Thank you for coming. Sorry not to be here today. After most significant events in council area, it's been reopened in the long term. This beautiful building is heart and soul of Ross to many people. When we could sit or walk around with three renovation, somehow our lives seem to reach. So its reopening is joyful and fulfilling many of the towns in Ross. I would especially like to thank all those involved directly through the authority of the local authority. The councillors and officers who have shown amazing work and those who hand support, which right into the core of us. With an incredible amount of work that's so loved them, I applaud all who have protected this building from danger. There may have been, there have been many council events throughout the year with Christmas hair and duty for the results. The open access ball was worthy of to disciple where. And I know it's closest to my life, so those over children, things like October half 10 events and summer pop feature. And I hope they enjoy the park during and their parents' school days. These ability we've developed combined with children's activities in the market and in front of the pay for competition will oversee and hugely appreciated by the community. These events give us residents a real boost as I also really appreciate the quality passing through. Many visitors who I talked to over the week, they're all in the local area and are planning on returning. I would like to be for council events, play parties and... For all the public of children, the council have been able to review our Dino Play Area and place a large piece of play on the rep or old street. Both these products involve external grant funding and we hope to carry on improving the city's paper vision to be promoted so far as we're all actually. A lack of provision for new cars and new trucks is having a still a new problem and then you can use some important help with the credit development. Our children are using the power of the community and I believe we need to adapt them and invest by the possibility. Over the last year, the house of thought with many different views and ideas how to help our town thrive and this is good to have a grand prize in approaching. However, sometimes this is less inaccurate and unhealthy shows isn't such a thing. Fortunately, we still agree with the least of most beginning shared with the trust fund and council unit and the local group. We've been able to a serious fault to my answers. The council are developing events engaging more with the citizens and I wish for the temptation of the next year or next year on the scene. I would hope that over the next year, all councils will continue to welcome the world, the world of everyone. As cooperation always brings more benefits in older. Finally, I'd like to thank everyone who has made me welcome in openers last year and shared their lives with me. Ross has always seemed a little bit nice for me, but I've been ever more impressed by the community spirit and kindness of people. And of course, I've specified to both those who've supported home ownership, the mayor's charity and those who have all baked in books as well. I hope that will be the case. I'd just like to pass on the thanks to them as well, I don't know if you're losing any. The next item on the agenda is presentations with council grant scheme recipients. First of all, this is a local producer of communities that respond. We're having a presentation with...
Two of us tonight. And yes, my name is Tom for those who don't know me. I'm one of the local mustard community first response charity at the Ross County within the team leader or Ross White. And so we received a grant last year from the Ross Town Council towards our responsive vehicle replacement project. And for those who know a little bit about our charity, we respond as volunteers within the town and surrounding areas to medical needs on the hard hand and certain. We've been operating in the town for many, many years and yeah, our original response vehicles purchased not long after the charity team formed in 2008. And we've had it ever since and it's still going strong now. We recently had a second vehicle over the last few years just to enhance our capability. And we're going to look at replacing our original vehicles for high donation of volunteers longevity years to come. So for those who have seen our original vehicle, this is what it used to look like. It's a 2005 vehicle, so it's been going strong for 20 years now. It's been really well served with the community. It's changed colours over the years since the national community first response of livery became a national scheme. We've got personal identifications for that now. But why do we need to replace it? So running costs are a big part of our charity. Everything is funded by donations and we need to make sure we're using donations to grasp the perceived best of our ability to make sure it goes to the best. Being a Land Rover, being on and was reliable and fits the replacing through general maintenance and bits and pieces like that. We want to ensure that we've got vehicles that can provide our volunteers a capability to reach our patients around the area every day of the year. Whenever, whenever anything happens, floods, snow, anything like that. Changes in technology mean we are getting updated equipment from the annual service every so often. And we need to have vehicles that match our capability to ensure that we've got the ability to carry all the equipment we need to reach our patients. And funding, we rely heavily on donations, grants and support from the community, from everyone. And the values break into the number two and how projects like this become successful. So we started around this time last year looking for options to replace our vehicle. We're considering second hand vehicles which we've converted into a community first response vehicle. We also liaised with other community first response groups around the west of the service region. And we ended up sourcing an existing community first response vehicle from Staffordshire after years and one of their charities up there. To ensure their vehicle kept going for years to come as well, just in a different location. So we ended up having a conversation with the scheme up in Staffordshire on the Derbyshire border. And we ended up purchasing this pretty man to see Van River from them for a very reasonable price. And as you can see, it's also got the green and yellow livery. So it's the old Hammond style livery. Therefore, it needed converting to what's the current national spec. So amongst the fundraising we've done, it's not only to purchase the vehicle, it's to convert it, ensure we've got the capability and equipment to be able to use it and put it out in the community. So after many hours of taking the stickers off, and if anyone's ever done that, you'll see they never have our business. We brought it back down to its normal form and then we sent it off to company up in Worcester to get the new livery put on, which looks fantastic. And amended the national livery. So we've got some scope within that to put our charity branding on. And also to publicise the people and groups that have helped fundraise for the vehicle itself. And after many, many hours, that's what our final vehicle looks like. But it's very bright and visible. And for those who have seen our other two vehicles, you'll notice the colours are slightly different. There's this change in specification since we had a revision on the sense, it's more vivid orange. And it's already operational out and about, just haven't had a chance to officially launch it yet. So it is responding to patients within the community. It's also helping us go out to do community education, CDR training bits and pieces like that. And the grants that we've received from the town council and other groups have enabled volunteers to have this vehicle. Thank you to what, what we've been doing over the years. So just flip through a few pictures for you. And as you can see, we've made a very prominent on the sides to say thank you to all the donors for this vehicle. Because without these grants and community engagement, you can't have these vehicles and can't actually respond to it much. So we are internally grateful for everything that's been there made for the project. You've probably already seen it out and about. So it's been out a few months now. And as you can see, we've got Ross Town Council in the middle there. Big thank you is one of the main donors for the vehicle funding project, along with other groups that have helped and the community in general. Because it's been individuals who donate to all this as well, not just the individuals. But we want to thank Ross Town Council for the grant and the support community in general to keep our scheme running, keep our charity running. So we can educate and perform as you will be. You need us, hopefully don't forget to let me know. And yeah, thank you.
The next presentation is from Ross Community Development.
I was supposed to speak without any thought. Just got a lovely slide to a point where I think that I've been there with thought and all the stuff that's happened. So I'm speaking to a client earlier than most of you have ever been told, we know we can't get moving. So for those who don't know, my name's Ali Park and I'm the project officer of Ross Community Development Trust. For those that don't know, this is very briefly. Oh, going to the end, going to the start, the, we don't know. That's all right. Okay. So for those that don't know, it's Ross Community Development Trust, it was formed in 2019. So it was part of Jane Roberts, so we were later in time, her project was to try and combat isolation. So we started this up 2019 with a view to doing a few different sort of projects around town, befriending services that type of thing. But unfortunately, what then happened was we had Covid came along in 2020. So we became the boss group neighbours who were really too caught part of those community development trusts, which were shopping. Couldn't do befriending, but you did a little bit phone befriending, but shopping was the main thing. And at one point we had over 400 clients around town, a lot of whom were insulated because of Covid. So that became our key thing. We still do the shopping though. This, this was last year up to our AGM this year, we had 271 shop deliveries. We've got ongoing befriending, because what we do is we get people together and then they can all do the same. So at the moment, we've got about 17 active vendors and clients that are helping each other. And it's very much true to process all of these things. I think people forget that for volunteers, the key thing is that the volunteer also gets a lot out of doing what we do. So I've got a couple of our volunteers that say Andy, see you tonight, what was your other faces? And we couldn't do it without those volunteers that committed our trustees are volunteers, our vendors, the shop personnel volunteers as well. So it's so good to have that and we've got our helpline, which again is run by volunteers. That's a 24 seven helpline. Those of you who get our newsletter, we'll know about it. And we basically leave a message on it and none of our volunteer team will get called by. So actually it's a real quick interview, what we do, what we're about. The key thing I'm going to talk about tonight, well, the last time council very kindly gave us some money to put on a festival volunteering. This was part of the John Carroll 300 celebrations, which I'm sure most of you are aware of. So there was a big celebration last year, which was one where a number of different voluntary agencies were involved. We had fences that ladies church were here to be involved and then ourselves. So this wasn't a Ross Community Development Trust event, it was a Ross Town Council John Carroll 300 event. And I stood and put my hand up saying, why don't we do a volunteering thing to say thanks to all the volunteers? Because I joined last year and I've been amazed. I mean, I've been involved for 30 years, as you can tell by my accent with Covid and now. And I almost thought I kind of knew what was going on about Ross and then I started to stroll and was just going away like how much stuff was going on. But what I saw straight away as a newbie into this voluntary sector was a lot of people working silos. And that's not necessarily negative, but you've got people sort of, you know, you're pumping away doing stuff and sometimes feeling a little bit alone and feeling like, you know, they don't know what's going on in the bigger world. Or what's going on with funding or whatever else. And what was part of this was, I guess, a way of starting processes, saying, let's, let's get the volunteers together. Because you're in the backbone of it, you know, you're the guys that actually wanted to make it happen. So let's say thanks to those people. And I was ever since from challenge shops in Ross to, I mean, we had, we had over 26 representatives that came that day, which was amazing. And we'd over 100 volunteers, I had no idea what was going to happen. You know, I, I threw it out there, we've got chocolate teapot, you've probably know Dean and, and John, so John Winter, previous mayor. So they also played a band. So we thought, let's pull them in because they also volunteer. So it was about trying to get volunteers involved and running it. And you probably see there in the left hand side, you can't really view any of them, but we've got a photobooth. And I don't know if Caroline's here, but I'd say thanks to Caroline and my good half Julie. So Caroline asking, come up this angle, oh, she's there, it's not big Caroline, behind the eight, the eight, the eight. And but Caroline got this great idea from the post office. And you know, we had no idea that there was going to be a walk and all, because we thought people might just not want to have a photograph taken. Well, let me tell you, once we had tried the first couple of them, in fact, you probably can't see it all again, but the first one, the first one was a dog. And he looked like, was a child, he wasn't even a volunteer, he just came in to see what was going on in the shop. So we simply dragged him over, it was called Neely, and I got the first photograph done. And one of our volunteers, Helen, and she dragged, I dragged her in. And Helen was amazing because once Helen had dressed up, this is John Carroll, just thinking what air she could be got on her head. I got curly wig and a bit of a pirate costumes thing and amended this like this. Because the idea was you could, if you wanted to, dress up as John Carroll. There was other things we dressed up as, we won't go into that because it's a family show, but it was also something we dressed up as. And you know, once, once I got Helen in there, is one of our volunteers, she also works scope, scope shop. So she's a really well known volunteer around Ross. She was driving people in quite happily. Every time that Karen and I looked off and whatever we were doing, Helen was driving someone off with the photobooth. And so all these photographs appeared, which was just fantastic. But the second part of it, which I think really, you can, you can stand, you can stand here and talk all you want about how amazing it all was, how fabulous. And you're not actually getting feedback from the people who were there. So what we did was with the photobooth is that you had to photograph and then decide your photograph, you could write. And it had a little thing that said, what I love about volunteering in Ross. So obviously people could write whatever they fancied. And you can see here in the right hand side, there was lots and lots of phrases that came out of it. And you can see there, there was absolutely like the local community, support, fun, meeting people, things something dodgy come up in there or something, love making. That's not actually what happens. It was just love and it was making as a sense. So just thought, you know, maybe something on there as well. But what was really lovely was the people, you know, people wrote down what they, what they felt, what they wanted. People don't tend to buy that if they don't believe in what they do, they would just not bother. And we had about, oh God, about 80 or 90 of these cards filled out with all these different things that were, that were written down. And that was, I think, probably the most important thing to read was getting that feedback from the real volunteers, the guys that really run Ross at the end of the day. And see what they get out of being a volunteer. And we also had our lodges. I've got some spare ones tonight, a slightly spamer looking because it was a picture of John Carroll. And the lovely Mark Sanderson from the church made it into a large forest. So it's not Mark's fault, it looks a bit strange. And that's just what John Carroll looks like. So we can't really putify him any more than that. So we got 2000 of these things and we've actually only got a couple of hundred left. Amazingly, Jane Roberts said, let's get 2000. Now, there's no chance that we're going to get through 2000 by the end. And actually, we can hand them out to everybody, you know, anybody that wants to be involved in any way, shape, form, volunteer in the Ross area. So we managed to hand out a body. If anyone hasn't got one, I will see me, I've got a little stash in my handbag if you want some. So that really was a bit, that's what it was about. And we're so grateful to the council for, you know, for assisting us in making that happen. We are supported by, you know, we're a, we're a charity, you know, we, we, we are supported by a lot of different funders. And fundraising is a huge, you know, Rachel Hinkins was one of our trustees until very recently, was an absolute wonder woman when I joined. Because she joined as a trustee and helped us to get some more funding put in place. And that, you know, that pays for me, I'm the only paid member of staff. This Ross city team, we've got an accountant, we legally have to, but other than that, it's, it's me and a bunch of volunteers that run this thing. So that, you know, that, the money's in the Ross Town Council, enabled us to do something that we probably couldn't have done otherwise. Because it's almost seen as frivolous if you're a charity to say, oh, well, let's go and organise a event for a volunteer. People say, well, that's what your full business. And by getting that grant from the town council, what we were able to do was to allocate me onto that for in between my normal job within CDT. And we're able to put, put that on. So that wouldn't have happened without the vision of the council giving it to us and saying, we could do make that happen. So we're really grateful for that. And obviously to all the other, the other funding organisations, areas are highly filled out there. And to be able to have these local grants from your local council on the ground, who know what's going on in Ross, who know what your charity's about, who know the people that are running those charities. That's what is weight and gold. Because you spend a lot of time trying to convince third party funders that you're, what you're doing is worthwhile. And I don't feel we have to work so hard for that here because they know us and they know what we do and they believe in us and that's really important. So thank you so much for your support. And we will set it down.
For those of you who haven't really, I'm honest, I've been a contributor of Ross County School for Children for 14 years, since my son went there. And because I know a fair amount about the financial situation, the fact that it's, as we all know, there's a problem in the world, shortage of money. And we're very grateful for the money that the town council gave to us to help the children celebrate Chinese Middle. It was the year of the snake, Chinese people decided. And we had a snake brought to the paper, the children's papers, which were very important. And probably one of our members of staff, they like to petrify the snakes, so they go on. We got some chopsticks for the children to eat Chinese food. And luckily they did poke each other in the eye and they didn't have sore bites. They bred trees for hundred chopsticks, he ate better than the others. And we then had a role play, a Chinese restaurant where the children could go sit and order their food and look menus. And we looked on the world map and we explained where China was to make Chinese lanterns. We've all done that, I'm sure. And the money that the council gave that we could do, we've done this every year. But this was just an extra little bit of money which helps us if we're able to do it. And we gave children a pair of chopsticks to take away with. So I would like to say thank you, the councillors who gave this to our peaceful paper. And I'd also like to say thank Jane who suggested I might make application because her children went to our paper in the 1990s. We started in the 1970, at 1970 by Joyce Thomas, who had a little brother, Alan Gavin. We celebrate our 50th birthday this year. We're going to have a party in... Ashcastle, we're going to have a what's come up. Orange, we should be there. Okay. Thank you very much.
After everything, I'm going to speak with teams, so we certainly do. The next item on the agenda is some presentations in the town's buildings.
I haven't prepared a proper speech presentation because I had a phone call. I'm just going to leave everything till the last minute, that way I can get things done faster if I do things. And yeah, somebody phoned me up to say, it's not working, it's hard this weekend. And so we're not quite sure what we're going to do about it. So I just had to grab something and I already wrote for the twinning AGM. I'm just trying to get to it. Anyway, I spoke to you a year ago, some of you were here and I'm Alison Field. I'm the chair of the French Putting Association, that is, Cross and Wide, it's pounding, on level, condition month, which has now become called, on the month of May. And yeah, I'm the chair because we have a president who quite often doesn't know that they're the president and that is the town there. Nobody knows she's the president and several people have, since I became the chair, because I thought it was my duty to tell them in case they're going to be around. But I'm really, really happy with that. Last year, the year before, we were asked to get involved with the town council. And we were given so much help and hope even before we got any money. Because all of a sudden we were a real town organisation and that's what really surprised me. I've probably got that somewhere in here. So yes, I'm Alison Field and I've been chair of Ross, pounding twinning since November 2011. I was second to June 2017, I remember before that. Because I speak French, I was often dragged in to translate speeches and guided tours off the cuff, which is really good fun. There's much about it stays, it's really good fun. So our French town twinning has existed since 1978, when our two towns were twinned by the mayors of our two towns. And since then, not a single year has passed, apart from the year of Covid, when there hasn't been a visit to or from condition now. Nowadays, a group of us go from Ross to there on the odd years and the French come to us on the even years. Because my French counterpart is superstitious about travel on the odd years. We did really silly things here. And so yes, the countryside of our two towns is very similar. We have beautiful green butterflies and so do they. They have lots of rain and so do we. We've even got a river, a river's event place spectacle called Semenziat and that's the small mountain. If you stand up on the hill overlooking the river, it looks just the same as if you're standing on the hill in the opposite town. There's a river down there, there's people having fun, there's hangliders, you know it. And we've got such a lot in common, our agriculture is similar. Oh, that's probably my mother, I'm ignoring it. It always stops at somebody else's, it's still a bit weird. I don't have a say, that's so useful. And yes, so it turns on. Oh yes, we have cheeses, they have cheeses, we have St. Bishop, they have camel bear, et cetera. And we also make cider and so do they. This past year, I was going to organise a visit to a cider making place in... This past year, I was going to organise a visit to a cider-making place in Britain. And I said to Sylvia, I think we ought to take you to see how English cider's made. And she said, oh no, we don't have ciders made. Anyway, we took you to one of our cidering, now we want something else, no, obviously. So I gave them gin. Yes, so, uh, I'll get back to where I was. It's wonderful how many people in our twinning have stayed friends for life. I've got friends who are, who have been in the Twinning Association since the second year of twinning, uh, French twinning. And they still don't speak French, but they know their friends and their friends know them. And they're a tears on completely twinning. It's, it's something you can't put into words, being twinned with a town and another culture. I still, after so many years, I still cannot find a way of putting it into words, but it really is really special. I've done it again, I keep getting sidetracked, sorry. So, um, in two thousand and eighteen, I spoke to a lady called Margaret Thomas, who you, some of you may remember. Uh, she was ninety one at the time and she was part of the twinning right back at the beginning. And she told me how much she'd enjoyed being a part of it back then, how much hard work it was. Um, and that she was still friends with her twinning family and spoke to them on the phone regularly and knew their grandchildren. So that was wonderful. And now we've got social media, it's so much easier to stay in touch with people. Um, so I talk to my French friend on WhatsApp or on Facebook or whatever. Uh, and we stay in touch in a way that we couldn't have done a few decades ago. Um, and we are going to France on the first of May, so that's Thursday. Um, once again, we're travelling in cars this year because we don't have enough members to be able to afford a coach. Um, and so that is quite expensive for our members, we don't normally have to go back nationally. But we are doing this year because we found, because we have a group of the wonderful Ross Town Councils. Um, so our, our, um, our twinning is continuing and I'm really happy, oh, this is why I said it. I'm really happy to be addressing the annual parish meeting in Ross on behalf of our twinning, a second to the running. We were so pleased to find out last year that our town council are very keen to support us. And they see us as an important part of town life, to be seen as representative of our town is really special. I'm really glad that I can't stick to the eight, that's enough. And right news is last year, we actually have some new members. Quite a high amount, it's because from this meeting, that's maybe because I went to talk to the U three A. Um, we, uh, beginners. They would have people block out because they've got old, um, and I want to do that. I'm bored and I still get them. Um, some of these members came through the Facebook page, which I'm really pleased about. We've got a page on Facebook, we've also got a page on the C D T website. It's a static page, that way if we forget to add anything to it, it might look terrible. That's what happened with our website before. And so I went for a visit by the French, like where you are, to give you an idea of what we do. Um, they arrived on Friday evening and we have a little, um, a glass of wine. And, and the French mayor likes to do a speech and sit a speech. And then we always head to our happy families. And, um, on the Saturday evening, we had a successful dinner at our house. Catered all by the rumbling town. I couldn't find any other caterers who were available and the French adored it. We had traditional spoken Hindi guy, followed by a proper English crumble. Only the French stuff that's that size and they loved it, absolutely loved it. And we had Louis representing us very bravely as mayor with his robes on. So now you can see he got a broken arm, it's that one. And it was so nice to have Louis there enthusiastically participating. And it was so nice to have our French mayor there as well. Um, and she, she's such a lovely lady and she really cares about this town twinning. Um, and so to have them both there infused, marvelous. Um, and then we took them on an excursion to Rockfield Gin Distillery, which is in Harifort, I've never knew it existed, but they make the most marvelous gins. They're not sweet and sticky ones, they're really intriguing, interesting flavors. So I'm thoroughly back in fact, and I do look them up on the internet. And going in with this, they're very enthusiastic and lovely people. Um, we've also had home events, um, that have improved in popularity this year. We were beginning to despair of ever having enough people to make that event happen. We tried wine tasting, we tried all sorts, but this year somehow we've all been together and done stuff. Um, we had one for brilliant Chair Supper in August, um, in the house of one of our new members. And we had this gorgeous garden and it was basically a garden party, wonderful. And the French U three A guys came as well. In November, we had a quiz night at the La Faisse Centre, which was what attended. And our friends from Betsdorf came. And this is another thing that's happened since last year, Betsdorf, we do stuff together. And they're such an enthusiastic bunch of people. And we have so much to comment because what we do it for is the same and it was, it's just so nice to be involved with you guys. Um, yes, and they came again to a wine tasting of weeks back. It was very well attended and extremely well led by, um, an amateur, not, not a professional, but he did such a great job. And, um, it was so, so well organised, the, the room was so full, we ran out of chairs, we ran out of spectators. But yes, it was great, old friends from the year from Ross. We even had a twinning members coming along because they'd heard about it. And yeah, it was wonderful. Um, I'll stop going on about that. Um, another piece of excellent news is that our, one of the top four language teachers who teaches French at Ashfield, some of you may know her, Janine Miller, she is hoping to twin a French school with Ashfield. And she knows a lovely couple who she has hosted at her house. And their son goes to a lovely school in Hornby. So we're hoping to start up a new town school twinning. Um, I don't think John Carroll was doing it yet, but I think, I think it may be in the, in the autumn. So our new members coming with us on our forthcoming trip, uh, which means we have new French members who are, I think, things were growing. And we couldn't have done it without the support of our town council. I think we'd have gone off, I think we'd have gone down the pub because love, being out on a limb is quite dispiriting. I almost gave up. And then I just thought, okay, we represent the town, we're going to do this, even if I don't find somebody younger and better me to take my place. So thank you very, very much for your support. And, and we had a very meeting recently where we asked, we were able to ask questions and that was really helpful too. So thank you. Um, so my take on the twinning over the years is that we're not just friends, we're family. Across cultures, meeting needs, forging bonds. And it is so very special, especially now we are part of our town, representing our town. And it's really special to our friend's house. Sorry, I would have written this later, but I think it's not.
Absolutely. Uh, the next one is Betsdorf.
My name is Tom Poles, I'm Mac, the chairman of the best of the Australian Association. Um, we've been with us for twelve years and one of the first things we did was try and join, kind of what's going on as far as social quickness concerned. And the German twinning associations, the friendly ones, the, and what the country's opinion is as well. And unfortunately, that is large because the person who we work with, they had moved, probably they're still friends with, like, Alison says. Uh, you know, the friendship continues. But we stayed in the, in the best of our nest, we've been living in, in twelve years, made a lot of local friends. Um, and also obviously made a lot of friends in Germany. Um, but the family that we're staying with, unfortunately, we had a marriage once. The family that we're staying with now, who will come to stay with us, the two young children, who are very enthusiastic, they're very keen. I can already relate to Alison and saying, um, it's, it works wonders. And especially since Brexit, it's become even more important, you know, to continue. And that's to a last degree that we have to thank the council because they very kindly started supporting us two years ago. Um, which was a great help because, um, as Alison says, the coast trips cost a lot of money. And I think it was very political for some time and just to afford to do what we are doing. Um, this year, exactly the same as with Alison, they come to us one year and we go to them the following year. This year, our German friends are coming to us. And they are coming over, the first round we came to the German, unfortunately, they always insist on the Pentecost, what is the German? And the Pentecost holiday, which then makes it a removal feast for us, which sometimes creates a few problems. But we can live with that. So anyway, they're coming over. And we are trying to organise things. And we first of all had a civic reception. We had in church the last time, but unfortunately this doesn't work at this time. So this time they're having it at the bowling club. They very kindly agreed for us to hold it there. And hopefully we will see probably a few of our council members at the bowling club as well for the civic reception. It's eleven o'clock on Saturday morning, the seventh of June. Um, and it is usually very well supported and Alison, who in Germany, got up and realised, oh, this lady, we want to come. So we made it a joint occasion, as you say.
I was bringing my German, anyway.
Cooperation, and so Alison is actually one of our newest members, she's joined, uh, very enthusiastically, which is a good start. And, um, which is good. Unfortunately, they must make the new members, they've got some brochures, we have, we have these brochures printed, they're everywhere there. So they can help themselves in a moment. And it's, uh, it starts the virtues of the twinning. And we found one of our members who's very handy, the bridge we have still around the new garden village, was Saint Mary's Garden, I think it's called. He's literally, he has hundreds of these things. And we tell us, and find much difficulty with no results to speak so far. But we have managed to recruit a few people by personal recommendations. One of the ladies who joined this year, she's actually in the process of groupings in two or three days. So hopefully, it's going to be able to carry on from there. So what we're doing after the civic reception, uh, guests will come home with us and then we even, we have a dinner. And imagine that is in difficult, since the chase was so close, to find a venue. Because one of the things that we wanted, that we wanted to appreciate of the council to stand for us, is keep the amount of effort sent in possible by where as much as possible. And so, uh, you know, we've, we've done, we're doing our other function at the, um, at the bowling club. And we'll be to Alison's, we're keeping back to the recommendations. We also look for the number of twenty, probably of the recommendations and to find an outside place. So hopefully that will work out very well. Um, and we have this evening lunch. And on Sunday, it's a free day, on Monday, we have a trip organised to Strakland Ave in this town. Because we're trying to do something that our German friends will find interesting, that they can cope with because quite a few of them speak very English, but obviously everybody does. And so we want to make it as interesting as possible and that they get a bit of English culture. So so this year, we're taking back to Strakland. We're having an interactive theatre tour. And then after that, we have lunch, um, at the theatre as well. And hopefully they all have a wonderful day. And then on Monday, they go back, come to Germany. And next year, then we go back, go to Germany. And again, hopefully we'll be, we'll be very generous, right? Um, you know, so interesting.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, yeah.
That's good, yeah. Um, yeah, I don't really think there is very much else to say apart from the fact that everybody who is in the twinning part of the German side and, uh, side, they decide they find it very, very interesting. The German twinning has been founded about forty years ago, similar to this. And it was started by Mr Wolf, who'd been involved in the community. And he actually came from Betsdorf, Betsdorf, he's a sort of, when I say it's an industrial town, it perhaps gives it all on pictures, sort of picture and small stacks and all this kind of stuff. It's not, it's like it's lost some way, it's like, oh, there, there's a lovely, beautiful area. Um, surrounded by lovely urban countryside and so on. But there are large engineering plants and he, both engineering, wanted to start something in Botsenby. And he said, you know, he wanted to bring something to the community, so he was instrumental in starting the Ross twinning association. Unfortunately, one of the sad notes, I'm sure most of you will know Sam Phillips. He is one of the family members as well, but he has been involved in a rather serious action and still got fully recovered by tuition. But I hope to see him at least on one of the occasions when they have either the twinning, the civic reception or the meal or the evening. And we've had pretty fortunate, a few new people on the other hand, unfortunately, as is the thing, people are getting older, people are opting out. So it is nice, it would be nice. But of the twinning movie, it is a lot, we're going to treat the street German, there are quite a few people there who speak no German whatsoever. Um, and the same holds true of the German side, many of them don't speak English, although some of them speak very good English. So it's a fun occasion, it's an exchange of ideas and cultures, everybody. Germany, we've stopped the trip, we look on Germany as a holiday destination or an interesting destination. But it is a beautiful country, the people are very friendly in spite of what's been going on in the past. And, uh, you know, more power to their, more power to our, to our twinning associations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I think those meetings are talking to it sounds so warm to Ross, they're very sweet with us. So we'd like your presentation from another twinning association, but unfortunately, we're still, so.
So they've got sites that they've asked if we can just run through. Um, we've, we haven't got any words, but there's a few photos and pictures of what they've been doing.
Can I talk a little bit about? So I, I don't, I don't know what the site is actually saying. But I, I think. And this is too many different because, um, you can't have exchange threats like having European, this is the various immigration rules, et cetera. Although there are a group of teachers coming over for, um, uh, to John Carroll, et cetera. And this group starts out from John Carroll going out to Uganda in this, um, little village. And what we're actually doing here, or what, what now the twinning association do, is more supporting the local community to support themselves. That is so important. The people are, they make a living, they're happy, they're community, et cetera, they can stay. Et cetera, and then just really expand out. Um, and it is really what, uh, the family club, the twinning association does. And, uh, one of them is speaking, is it simple things like putting together a pig or a, it's just as simple as that. Or creating netting around a fishery's pond to stop predators and taking the fish out. It's just simple things like that. And they, um, they do it through loans, um, uh, to the local community that are paid back by the local, whoever takes tennis, you know, one hand farmer, et cetera, or a waterer, et cetera. They're very sort of, well, that's sort of a quote, and if anybody says, then please correct me if I've got something wrong with this. But it is that sort of thing, um, they do. And it's really, it's brilliant to see a community really helping themselves from a little, a little bit of money, see, see money. It's really interesting to us, that means so much to them. Uh, and you can see they, they recognise when, uh, things are donated to them. Those, you know, water catchment speed, you can see the pigs having fun in the, uh, the down puddle there. Uh, because some pigs do get. Some birds. Uh, and, uh, also, I know, I believe that John Carroll sends lots of books to them, they go on school trips, et cetera. It's more, um, uh, and it means so much to them. And, and people may think that is their money, uh, taken away or taken, you know, the big gold or skin lot. It is not, it is quite small amounts of cash. And there's a big build up of. And there's a big build-up of, um, trust between, um, uh, the, the number of the training association and one of the chief projects coordinators, et cetera. I think they've done an amazing job there to, just to, just to keep things going. Um, so, um, you know, there is paying school and college fees, buying books, paying for health needs, but more crime, building a home, buying extra land for general farming, that's more on the cooperative side, et cetera. But we have done, uh, a great job. And, uh, the other thing I would say about the training organisations, because you can see on our website. We, we funded, um, Conde and Bestorf, I think two and a half thousand pounds each year, is that right?
Well, not, no.
Well, one and a half. Oh, okay, number two, which just got one thousand pounds. So it's, it, you know, it's, it is such a fraction of that cost to a town.
I'd have to give up by then to answer it, definitely.
Well, thank you for that. And, uh, I won't talk about that later. Um. Uh, so these are objectives. So, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You take it, Ross? Very good. Coming me. Um, could I steal your pageant? Yeah. I didn't send it in time. Okay, so, uh, yes, as, as mentioned, I'm Andrew Lipton, uh, I'm the section one oh six programme manager at Hermitage. The first question you're going to ask me is what is section one oh six? It's monies collected by the rich capital from local development. And so these are housing being built and with more housing comes the need for more places. More bridges, roads, more sports clubs, like that. So that is section one oh six contributions. Ross has finished quite well, so far, done Ross projects, the brewing club, just finished the, sort of, Ross tennis centre. We've got Ashfield Park, a big extension going on there. And, and the other contribution that are going towards Bolton Park, which you'll know as Ross Skate Park. Um, the site itself, um, obviously Ross, can't, can't talk in, looking on the site for twenty years. Um, it has, you know, like most skate parks around the country, they become a bit unloved, they need a lot of maintenance. Um, and Ross Skate Park itself at the moment, you know, this is pretty un-uneconomic at the moment. Um, and when I went to the site, you know, I met some of the local members and I know some of the faces marked here somewhere, saw a face, I don't know, in Ed. And, and everything has been presented this morning, you know, you've got such a great community spirit. And as a project manager, I saw this site, I thought, be so much more. Um, the man mentioned in a letter, you know, there's still a lack of youth servicing in this project, it's really exciting. Um, it has so much opportunity. And we've got the river in the most proximity, um, the connectivity possibilities here, um, is really, you know, really big, tempting to make this project, um, an example. Unfortunately, England, we've mentioned a lot of different countries tonight, um, we, you know, we're, we're a bit behind in terms of, uh, the rest of Europe in terms of the offering for young people for, um, play and creative learning. And this is an opportunity, as I see it, um, to, you know, bring something together. So Bolton Park, you'll see the Facebook group, you'll hear the name, uh, you don't have to read all of this. But generally, our objective is, um, obviously to provide a new skate park, but it's much, much more than that. We want to promote active lifestyles, uh, the young child that was here in the years to come. Uh, there will be a place for that age group. We want, uh, anyone in the community that will read and fall down and use this park. Any, any demographic, whether it's meeting socially, having a, a generally nice, safe, well-lived walk. Uh, there will be something for everyone. Um, and obviously tourism and economic sounds beautiful. I'm not local, um, but I come here and it's such a, such a wonderful, lovely place. And I think the connectivity with the river, um, the forest in the, uh, area is a back corner of the slide. Um, there's so much opportunities and there's a lot of space, um, that we're able to utilise. So what do we want? And it's a good question, it's not we, it's the community. Um, at the moment, you know, the focus is on a vibrant, community-focused activity park. And there's a range of facilities for all age groups, so that will be major. Um, what that would look like will be shaped by the community, uh, through consultation, uh, through upcoming discussions. I'm here today to give you a bit of a overview of the project, hopefully share some of my sideburns, even as a non-Ross resident. Um, and yeah, you know, this project isn't, isn't something that's come out of my brain. Mark Ed's pushing this project and probably people around this room have talked about Ross Skate Park in that area for years to come. But this, this goes back years. Luckily, we do have section one oh six contributions been allocated. That means I'm standing here, that means we've got some money to do something. Um, which is, these people are mentioned, money is the thing that makes us, you know, makes things happen. What you're seeing on screen is some spatial planning. You know, we have to start with some ideas. Uh, you don't walk into, uh, a room and sort of say, what do you want? Tell me what you want, you know, we have to start taking some examples, start shaping what we feel inside. And obviously, a skate park is part of that. Um, but obviously, as I mentioned, other sports, other activities, not just focused on boys. Having areas with girls, um, there's a big focus on, on making space for, for girls in different demographics, different ages. Um, you know, it, it can be much more than an activity park, it can be a social area, it can be open by a community. So the concept design, sorry, it's one word, the spatial design that we've done. So at the moment, what we do is we start plotting, we start putting things in places. Um, but this is very much just, uh, our own moving things around and putting things here and there. Um, which is shape the kind of concept for, for what, um, the, you know, what the project is. It's about play, it's about activity, it's about social good future. So there's a line team, so obviously, heritage council at the top, joined by Ross Town Council. We're working together, working with council crystal, Mark, Ron as well. Um, and we're working closely to make this project not just like dream, not just an images on the screen, uh, something that's real. Um, with the use of the monies, so in bar, with, with the allocation, with the budget, we've been able to bring on a professional design team. We have ESA landscape architects, professional landscape architects from Oxfordshire. Uh, one of the employees lives in, who's, like, long world, was very local, um, which is great. And Ben Creek, they are skate park designers, they deliver four hundred fifty across the UK. And, and obviously, a part of this project is about the skate park. So where are we now? What are we doing? So, um, I've gone into something called pre-app, pre-appopulation. Um, and that's why usually the spatial assessment that we've done, I have to present the council with something to comment on. Uh, otherwise, it's, there's nothing to comment. So, um, that process is just concluded. Um, I received, haven't received, uh, yet, but received a lot of the feedback in this morning. Um, and why I'm in pre-app, it goes out to all the different organisations, that's right, this goes out to a colony. Um, you know, I found out today the site is on a, an old landfill site, isn't it? But these are the things we have to test, these are the things we have to once, uh, the corners are moving forward. But as you can see on the programme, what's going to happen now, uh, well, May, we need to do some side survey work. So I need to, need to do a land survey, we need to understand space, we need to understand everybody who reach, uh, to the area. Do a couple of investigations about the grounds, uh, and obviously, we do have some issues in the area with flooding uh, that we need to start thinking about now. So surveys, the lease agreements, uh, will, will take place over May as well. We're, you know, I think we have a good understanding of what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities are. Um, but also take on a mapping. So I don't know the community as well, but it's people on the screen who know, uh, much better. We want to engage with everyone. So I'll be putting together our stakeholder list from everyone at heritage council, every group, uh, every possible niche that we know exactly who we are engaging with, that no one comes to me in this process and says, you didn't talk to me, you didn't have an opportunity. And finally, we move on to, um, our RIBA stage two. So that is really, we're starting to understand the site, starting to understand where things possibly go. And then we move into public consultation. I'm always of the view that I don't like to go have public consultation events and sort of go, like I said, what do you want? You know, want to test some things, want to test some things, what do you like, what don't you like? And those events will be held over, uh, June. Um, I'll be working with the local, um, with Ross Town Capital, might have one here, we might have one out in the skate park. But we'll be talking with schools, everyone, there'll be online stuff. So everyone have an opportunity to, to help shape this final design. Um, going forwards, we've got all at the moment is to put in the founding application. Take this view, everything I'm sharing on screen, and make it a formalised flag that everyone in the community can be proud of, it can be excited about, uh, coming forward. We do have, uh, healthy budget for design, we also have a healthy budget to put towards the good, put towards the delivery of the project. However, um, it's a big project for Ross, for Ross, and that will take, um, some additional, uh, contributions. And like I, a lot of people have mentioned, we'll be doing exactly the same. We'll be asking grant funders and, you can put some of the further names on the screen, Garp in Western, um, especially, um, National Rotary UK Fund. But we have to make them want to invest in our project, so we've got to make it a land project. Um, but there's a lot of opportunities for grants, there's a lot of, um, we have money already, so I'll take them, I'm all happy to invest in the project where we do have of our own money. Uh, and I'm confident that we'll get to a place that we will be able to deliver to. Um, the first thing is, what are we delivering? Um, let's make it something we, everyone can be proud of. And that would really impact much now, but on that little chap that was sat there, why don't you feel how amazing? I call her head too. But anyway, um, that's it in a nutshell. Um, my contact details on screen, gonna hang around, I think there's a Q and A, if you've got any questions. Um, but thanks very much.
Yes, so that's why I can probably, there's, uh, there's a lot of my town council budget consideration. Twenty six, twenty seven, it's, I'm led by, uh, absolutely, Julian, do you know? Please note, because I haven't got a question, because I haven't got full pages. It's, 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 it's. And I think you saw on the way in, a document called, uh, Ross, my town council. Like it, uh, consultation, um, these can't be copied, these, and I think there's also one on that, that's, that's, that's. And so what we're trying to do is actually, or one of the criticisms we've had, but also one of the town council improvements, um, things that we can do to provide, uh, provide greater accountability to the users and parish, uh, members. It is a comment on how you want, um, um, as, you know, what this, this is spent in the local community on the Twitter. Uh, and how much you'd like to see the preset, uh, projects. And so really, uh, we're looking for comments on the services we provide, how well we are doing, such as the street cleaning that we provide. I know that is meant to be heritage church and county responsibility, but so a couple of years ago, members of the town wanted us to actually improve the town centre, et cetera. So we took then the decision to actually fund it ourselves, uh, for the benefit of the town. And I think we'll record, well, our first degree, but it was fantastic.
Yes, yeah.
That's, I can, right, you're. So, yeah, I'm going to need to take that some bit. But, but it's not just how well we provide services, it's also, do you want us to actually continue with them into next year's budget? Uh, the other question we're looking for is, what do you, what should we do with our old town council offices at the Corn Exchange? Um, for about six, we're at six and seven, we're, I want to actually do it. So we're after your ideas, uh, as well, that we will take them to account. And there are some suggestions on that. Also, um, there's a bit about events with current, and you see the types of events with fun, et cetera. If you want to continue with that, or include another event, um, et cetera. And the same with our markets as well, how would you like our markets, um, improved, et cetera. Um, and also how are we maintaining our building facilities? Uh, we've just completed the renovation of the market house, but we've got to renovate this building on the outside and also the corn exchange facade as well, um, et cetera. Do you actually want us to do that? Or do you want us to invest in, um, uh, changing rooms, which is providing greater accessible toilets, et cetera, for somebody like you, et cetera. And then decide, all we have been doing is trying to maintain a reasonable increase, depending on the economic characteristics, uh, of, you know, doctor living crisis, et cetera. And trying to keep the, to inflation below a match heritage church county councils, um, increase excluding the adults. And, but do you want to increase the price fifteen percent? You know, it's, it's actually, it's very percentage, it's an impact that will give great percentage increase on the pre-set money. We currently raise, what was it, about six hundred and thirty thousand? Yeah, so we raised six hundred and thirty thousand pounds through the pre-set. And, uh, I think this year, because, or last year, because of market house renovation, we actually, and other things, we've got about another three hundred thousand in costs. So, um, we actually spent about the new ones last year. So our budget would turn to more normal grants for this year, about eight hundred thousand. That's all we have, and then also we grant income. One thing we have done is dramatically increased our external funding sources through grants. Um, that, that I think has benefited the town immensely. And we're hoping to continue that, therefore reduce the tax load on yourselves. But you may want us to tax more and spend more, that's your opportunity through from that survey. So, thank you. Thank you. And that bike will be there through the town council. Absolutely. Thank you, thank you. This is a new initiative for this year. We mentioned a lot earlier, 2024 was the tricentenary of death of John Curl. And in order to mark that in what's occasioned in the calendar, it was decided that for the first time, the council would like to offer a civic award, John Curl Civic Award, for an outstanding contribution to the community. And we decided the best way to do that was to ask you, who you thought deserved to be given such an award. And I'd be like to say, well, lots of nominations. We appointed an independent panel of judges, who given the very difficult task of sit there and fill these applications and making a decision. I think they were impressed all round with the quality of the applications. We do have nominations, I should say, we do have a winner, please to say, and well, one, a nice way to talk about that one, just before we begin. Might be to read a few of the quotes that we received about this nomination and then the reports, the ones from panellists, on why they selected the eventual winner. So if you'll forgive, I'll read to you that, I think it's worth it. Okay. So these are some quotes from the nominations for the winner. "One fantastic asset to our town, a place for people that may not have a place to go to, to be part of a community, to learn new skills and get support. I cannot think of a more worthy winner. They have supported my family and my son, knowing with food and comfort, safe place to be alongside moral and community spirits. A few people's outstanding vision and efforts in creating this space is now established here, but provides an outstanding support to those in the community. For recognizing and providing a first-class facility for people so often neglected by society, for giving hope and dignity to users of their services, being helpful, caring, and friends of people who don't know where to turn. So proud to have this in our town, thank you to the team there." Some of the quotes from panellists. "This is a local community project run by local people, all local people, with the aim of helping and improving lives of those within the community. Being local means that genuine connections are made, allowing the staff to truly advocate on behalf of vulnerable people who often don't have a voice, or find engagement in a modern world very difficult to do. It gives vulnerable people a chance to build their confidence and gives them back dignity to allow them to make their own personal contribution for Ross to society. It provides a safe space to allow people to just be themselves without judgment. Supporting marginalized people is particularly powerful, things that very people most of us stand on by statutory services. This group, often neglected, has been hard to reach. Having an organisation that picks up the pieces and offers a link to statutory services, such as helping benefits forms or arranging appointments, is a crucial intervention that reduces health inequality." Some of you are probably guessing when we go through this. I will say this organisation doesn't just change lives, I'm sure it actually does its saves lives. So let's check, I'd like to announce that the winner of the very first John Curl Civic Award, the North Award, is the Hub.
I'm also my local family, who is, who is herself in bottom lines, and also on behalf of our clients, those we have helped, those we are helping, and that we're going to help, is going to mean an all-day up to our regulars. And I also need to say that we wouldn't have got this far without the generosity and the community spirit of the Ross and Wyther residents. I really think that the Hub is a place built by the people of Ross, and this award is not only for us, but it's for you all as well. Thank you very much.
When is Levery Road going to be resurfaced but not touched?
It's a good question. I don't know whether they can, that's just nothing.
Because I actually cashed the councils for repairs and improvement of road services. And if this governor didn't, a good sign for the image of Ross, when people have to travel. I think you had better travel with a horse than with a car.
I agree with the tradition.
Yeah.
Do you want me to answer this? Yes, okay, thank you. And there was, I tend to think there was any money allocated last financial year. For the previous two financial years, there had been money allocated, not correctly to Ross, but to where Ross could, the town council could suggest priorities for road servicing to be undertaken. And I think we only had £100,000, was that right, in the first, each year, the first two years, that sort of order. So it's very little we could actually do, but it did improve some areas. There has been some talk of it coming back for this financial year.
Yes, there is.
So there is, so we have got some priorities. I don't think, well, I don't think Levery Road was on our initial priorities, but I think we will take that. There are lots of different roads around Ross, et cetera. And that we'll take it on board to suggest it, okay? And look at the other priorities as well that we have for that small amount of money. This doesn't mean that all the money is the only money allocated by Heritage Church County Council for resurfacing of roads. But I'm sure our two camp councillors there here, Louis Starpeh, next to you, is Edo Driscoll as well, they will take on that as well.
What I find strange is there's a section between Ross and Levery. It's going through that wider section through the woods, that was completely resurfaced. And you can only let all traffic goes on that road, opposed to the traffic going into Ross. So every day, I find funds for doing that section of a limited usage road compared to a major usage road.
I, I, I can't answer that question, I'm not from Heritage County Council.
Well, if it can get related back to the local.
Yeah, it's that we have your two camp councillors here that could take that for you. Yeah, we will put it on our list as well.
Just as a follow-up gentleman, if Ross Town Council was given the opportunity to prioritise which roads were done, yes, some roads were done. How is it that, like the gentleman has asked, Levery Road wasn't done, when Ashburn Industrial Estate was done? You know, that, that's not, I didn't think that road was in bad, in bad condition.
I think, I think it's a lady behind you that's got an answer.
Yeah. I do, I do know, talking to councillor Chris Bartram, who is the Ross North County councillor, that he did try very hard to persuade Heritage Council to resurface Levery Road, but they had identified the Smallbrook area, and they wouldn't change to Levery Road. So he is trying to get it done, so I know it is a priority. One factor that they do take into account is the number of defects reported. So it's always worth on Fix My Street, to report defects, because that is part of the data that they use when they determine where they're going to be serving.
Well, they should have their own paper, expecting not to rely on the public.
In my point.
Yeah, we've been really trying to get Levery Road repaired, resurfaced for the last two years, not longer than that. We've been pushing it to get on the list, along with a lot of other roads, also needed to be done, some of which I'm pleased to say have been done. I've also been pushing for Cops Cross Street to be done, and I'm pleased to say that that is now being done in this financial year. And it's been allocated, Cops Cross Street going down to Nice Street, so that is going to happen this financial year. There is still a very strong possibility we could get Levery Road done this year. I think Julian's right, and the more people that send in pictures of pop holes on Fix My Street and stuff like that, which you can do, it helps us when we're translating evidence to the need for it. I've got an email from Ed Brad today, Head of Highways, and we're constantly asking for it to be done. We don't, sadly, we don't have the power to wave them as you want and just make it happen. And there is a limited budget across the whole of the county. We, the three councillors in Ross, we're not in a position of power at the county council, we can only request for it to be done, and we do continue to do that. But I know councillor Bartram's been pushing for it, because it's in his mind, but we've all been pushing for it, and we will continue to do so.
Our right to say it is resurfacing and not packed.
No, resurfacing is not pushing.
And the other thing is, I know councillor Bartram is also trying to get, it's a crossing, just outside John Curl's high school on, across that road, the Levery Road as well.
Could I, could I just say that what a great value the countryside trail is on the west side of Ross? And how many people value that? It is a walkway, people use it to ride their bikes to work. And it is just a safe green place for people to get away from cars, and you can walk all the way to town from it. But it is of great value and is very much appreciated.
I'm Maggie Philcar, and I've lived in Ross and that area for about 20 years, and you may have seen my Facebook recently. We need to encourage more traders into the market and not push them away with extra cost. It takes a lot of revenue to make £80 worth of pitch fee when there's not big footfall in Ross. I'm aware Nigel has a choice, but why not negotiate with him rather than decide double the fees? If there are other traders that need this space, then why not ask Nigel, who just moved back for the time that they want it, because they probably won't want it all year, like he does. The marketplace surely looks better having someone there selling clothes, and brings in more people to the market. I suggest to go and have a look at a venue. There is nowhere now in Ross to buy reasonably priced clothes, now that Dorothy Perkins and Peacocks are both closed. And what we can do, we go to other towns and support other towns and cities, so therefore we're using trade. In three weeks, Ross hasn't had Nigel there, we have been losing money. There were supposedly potential traders for these spots, but I don't know where these potential traders are, because there's nowhere under. I have been taking photographs every week, and I haven't seen anybody but a few tables from the mayor in the, under the market house, market being the operative word. This is our money too, how much more of this are people going to lose? You say it's a matter of fairness, but I'm sure if you ask the other traders, they will be quite happy with Nigel taking the whole of under this, under the market house, and it's very, very cold. So why can we not give concessions to traders who are local and have every week, all year round, trade? And have been here for over 40 years. And by being local, he also, which I think you need to take into account, is that he has minimal carbon footprint. After my photographs. And yes, I realise it's fairness, it's £10 a pitch, but to double his fee, it would have been better to negotiate rather than to double it. Which they did. It's 40 million, it would take more for a lot of money to make profit on 80.
Thinking of it, the spelling is using for the fee that she had at the time, and he chose not to use that.
He's still need that sort of market in the town, but. And we could give concessions to someone who's been trading for that length of time. And the fact that he's local, doesn't have it coming anywhere, it goes, is it valid? It was due to South Park and Buckbridge, which is not taken into consideration, we have the trade into Ross every week. And Ross is town, the trade in Ross is small.
And land, I think it's a trade, the King Cox.
Yeah.
Holland and Barret, Holland and Barret. I agree, so he's, he's in Bigwood, no support.
Yeah, I obviously, you may have seen, because I may have seen some of the stuff.
I continue as well.
So. Yes, I'm good. I support the town council's favour, of course, but I haven't read all of the comments from residents and traders in the town. I haven't looked at loads of different ways that markets operate in market towns. And out of that, there's some really interesting and perhaps operative points, maybe too, that could be adopted at Ross Town Council. So some of those will be taken to our committee, the parties, Community Markets and Tourism Committee, as a suggestion of possible changes where it can be discussed. I can only say to yourself that if you have any ideas of how concessions could be put in, email them to the town council.
I have. I mean, I think you should give concessions to people who live in Ross, why not? Why not? You know, they're supporting our local town, this is for us, we want traders in the town, we don't want to kick them around.
It's been our guest, it's been quite a monthly issue, it's been got a bit of potential on Facebook. So the next meeting, we're going to see M T, it will be on the agenda, we will look at our policy. There was no change to the policy that I had since then, there was no change, it was major, that suddenly Nigel was in a situation there. Something that had been changed to the policy, we had to.
It could be spread out.
Sorry, sorry. But we do have, the way local authorities work is they have policies, that they are required by law to both adopt and enforce. And what we will do is, we will look at this, we will look at what's happening, we will look at alternatives. And if there are options that we can introduce to the policy at the next meeting, we can make suggestions. It's great that people are energised and enthused and trust feeling what we're doing. And if we can do something that will improve the way you run the markets, we'll try and do it, while being as fair as we possibly can, both to Nigel and to all of the existing, and hopefully future traders on the market. Unfortunately, we can't change policy because of a facial post or something that's happening. It has to go through the process, which is really boring and really tedious, but we have to go through the process because it's probably.
Public number you're losing.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is Ross's town, the elected members are only here because of the people of Ross. And I hope that it doesn't drive those people away from shopping in Ross.
Right.
So it's, you know, I think that has to be remembered as well, that policy's aren't always right.
You can change the policy.
Yeah.
So that might give them new options, right?
Yeah.
Give concessions to local people, so that they're, it is fair with other people, they've been there 45 years, and they live in Ross, they get concessions. They only spread out across the marketplace because there was nobody else using it. And now there's still nobody else using it, that is my point on Facebook, it's empty.
I'm not sure what the next beginning is.
Yes, you. I'd like to sort of respond, because I also get the Ross Traders Association or Business Association, people who are in shops, that do complain about the low pitch rates that markets have, they pay all these rates and rents, and they're here throughout the year, et cetera. So they have high costs, and that, so we're quite in a difficult situation, we're trying to be fair to everyone. On here for what's reasonable. And also, we were prepared to negotiate. Unfortunately, that trader did not, they walked away this week and we still prepared to negotiate.
Listen. With Covid and the main organiser of the Ross Carnival. It's a really, you know, challenge of the town council reorganising something for next year. Because it brings, it brings in a lot of revenue in the town for that day.
I think the town council would be more than I can just support it. I don't know whether we are the research or. The other thing I'm discussing, we were keenly aware of what Nick Courtland's event at Carnival was in the calendar. And I think Deputy Mayor Lindley is quite correct in saying that while we might not have the capacity. We were very keen to look at how we could potentially introduce a series of grants to cover the cost of more different boats. So that we could have something like up to twenty different grants of, of, of a significant size. That would allow individual organisations to, to have the money to pay for the boat to make it work. Which could be the foundation of the business plan for an organisation wanting to get it up and running. And that, that was widely accepted as a good idea that the community, it was a lot of people very interested in that. But I do think historically, it was an external committee of people that came together. And I think at the present time, we don't have the capacity, we didn't need cash ourselves to take on running. But there was a real willingness to try and support the actual carnival event itself in some way. If we can get a group of them running to organise an administration.
But it's people with the clever bits up and the council and we'll get more support.
It is, it is, but again, it's just a capacity issue for the, for the amount of work the council is already doing. And the amount of work individual councillors are already doing on a variety of projects. It's taking on another commitment at this stage. He's asking a lot of certainly sort of the mind.
Could I just say that I was chairman and I ran Ross Carnival for twenty five years? And it was unfortunately when the then committee had to retire. And it was handed over to younger people that it was just infighting and it collapsed.
Yeah, no, I spoke to you years ago about the carnival, about how we could get people to restart it. So I had initial meetings with some of the past committee. Yeah, which perhaps didn't quite go to plan. We were then tried to restart those again. And we were asked to hold off for a little bit by Ross Town Council, not officially, just. Just in the depth of people talking of how we might do that with the town council. As Tammy and Jessica said, we're going to have resources for that, but there is still a massive passion drive from a small group of people. Myself being one, some other councillors, Katie Millie, and there's some past committees that are interested. And also a lot of locals that are interested. Of course, as you know, it's going to take a lot of work. We're looking at having a meeting at the end of May at the hub. It will be on Sunday. Date yet to be confirmed, but we'd absolutely love to hear from the past committee. Maybe you can get some of those on board because that's going to be real key to going again. And anybody that is interested because it's, you know, it's going to be a big, big project to take on. And not only, you know, three councillors can't do that, we're not going to be giving the council council capacity. We're going to be giving individuals that wants to bring it back on the town. We'll be setting up a committee, hopefully if we can put it together. And we will be asking the town council for a plan for support for that to the committee, which we all run officially, hopefully. If we can get it off the ground and we get the volunteers to come forward. But it's going to take the volunteers to make that happen. Without it, it isn't going to happen. So share that, spread the word. We want it to happen. There, Julian. Okay, come out. If you want Facebook all the time, I'll make sure you know that. It's going to be the end of May sometime.
And on the survey, there is a comment on the events and the carnival is one of the options. Okay.
Can I just say, as a member of Ross, we can pay for it. We wouldn't want any of the money. We rent the carnival every year and won't. But I was definitely involved in this and I really, really want it back because it's such a part of the showroom of it.
Yeah.
And the town is, the town is wonderful out there. So happy end.
I don't, you may have a little question. Don't understand what's about the meeting contract that's highest level. Heriportshire Council, you're handling contracts, you know. I'm far ahead of it. It's dangerous when our local contractors ask for it or want it serviced. I don't know whether all county councils present come through any insight into that. I can hear. We're currently going through the tentative process. Some of the services are being brought in-house. There just isn't the capacity to bring the whole thing in-house. But there is, there is some, some of the jobs that Balfour Beatty are doing at the present time will be coming back to Heriportshire Council. But we're at a stage now where I think it's, we'll be going out to tender in the next six months.
Yeah. I'll stand because I'm not hearing very well either. There's a two-stage approach at all. Under the existing contract, we've been bringing services back in-house. Where it's been agreed with Balfour Beatty that that's the best option. Example, we bought traffic management back in-house. Which is allowing us to start looking at changes we might want to make in terms of fast, in terms of speed limits, in terms of weather issues around the town. That's been brought back in-house. The public rights of way has been brought back in-house as well. Because again, we agreed with Balfour Beatty on the contract, it's better for us to do it at the moment. Rather than wait for the new contract to be, to be procured. Against that, there's also all the work being done by the council on a new contract for the public realm. The public realm is not just about the woods. Public realm is about green spaces. It's about the whole environment that, that, that the council's responsible across the county. There are some overlap with town council because we have some green spaces, they have some. But that whole public realm contract has gone out to tender. And that's going to change the relationship between the council and who the contract's going to be. Because in the future, we will have more services in-house where they are of a technical nature. Example, the locality stewards who you know are actually the third line between us. And the contractor moment to very well become a functioning influence. So that part of that will change the whole relationship between who we as a council. Do as a commissioner in terms of those services and what the contractor will then be asked to provide. And that's going to change in a major way. And it will actually answer some of your questions about, well, why in the annual plan are some roads prioritised? Another road's not prioritised under the Astrid Landlord scheme. And I think the council wants to have a greater involvement in trying to make that more transparent. And more understandable to, to the residents of the county, not just Ross. And we've got two thousand miles of road, remember? That's a massive amount for a small populated council as. So there's two states process. Some services are already coming into the council and we're running them. As, as we go through the new procurement for the new contract as well. And that, as Ed has said, should be hopefully around about the next six months, we should be going out to, to tender them.
Can I just ask, when you bring these people in-house, were you there to recruit your own people or were you have to cheapie them over? From where they are at the present time, because you're getting same, you have to cheapie them, you get the same work.
To start with, we did cheap us some over, but we have recruited others. We are recruiting others as well. But it is, it's, it's a, it's a process, it's developing. Because under, under the new contract, we are looking at bringing in what's called a property services firm. Who will actually help us with the expertise that we need in order to become an intelligent customer of the contractor. So there's, there's a whole range of issues there where, yes, we will want to employ our own staff for certain functions. But for other, for other professional services, we won't have that expertise. So we're going to have a firm sitting side by side with us to advise the council. As to what we should be expecting from the new contract in terms of spec and everything else. So there's a whole range of issues going on here. And, and it is very much along the lines of trying to provide better service for the residents of Hampshire. That would be the test, but I mean, I'm hopeful we've learnt from the lessons of the twenty thirteen contract. Because that's when it was first drawn up, this one that we have at the moment. It's been in place for twelve years now. And I'm hoping we've learnt from that lesson and that the new contract, what more in the favour of the residents of Ross and of Hampshire. Rather than simply we have to rely on the contractor sometimes to actually advise us what should be our priorities.
Thanks, Lily, Julian.
Yeah. It's part of my full-time job. I've regularly taken on new contracts, which has forced me to cheap people in. That it is a legal requirement on that. However, what I've discovered is that it's not about individual people doing a good or bad job. It's about the leadership of those. And I've found if those people are led properly, told the standards of which to do that job, et cetera. They actually, their whole service is massively improved. So it's not about individual, it's about the leadership. So that's been my experience.
I'm going to do a quick job on all of this, great.
I've done that today.
Really?
So I have a question, maybe I'm a bit quite silly to smile, but it was a project and we didn't point it out to anybody. No, no. Because at the moment, we don't know, we've really got to do the consultation with the community. Everyone's got to have their voice in terms of what you want from the park. And once we've got to the end of that process where not everyone will be happy, that's never the case for projects. But once we've got to a finalised vision, then I can, then I can make that. But, you know, with planning anticipated for September. We're looking at a sixteen-week turnaround time and planning applications. And as long as, it's a number of factors, as long as deliveries, monies are in place. Can move straight on with the programme that we've created. We're not looking at gaps. So we're looking at planning application goes in, then the focus shift. We're already looking at grants, supporting the grant funders. But you need to know what you're designing to understand what the cost is. In order to put, put your ask into the grant funders. So, yeah, I think that will, that will shape, but certainly it's a funny funny sits.
Like the sound sample, that, that plan on the, on the side. Does that include the car park or the shop and the skate park that you've run in?
Yes.
Will we, will we lose our car park as well?
No, so Walton Car Park's obviously huge.
Yeah.
And it comes around the, the front of that area. That has to be remembered. So, yeah, you've got that front bit of the sky. But what we're trying to do is utilise, utilise unused space, like at the back of the skate park, you'll see.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfectly flat, it's really good connection, so, but no, there'll be no impact on, on the grid. That's why we're going into pre-app as well to put the say of the councillors.
I'm going to be more prudent. How much is Heriport putting forward for this plan?
So there's a hundred and fifty thousand, it's six one six from you people in place. Developing, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mentioned from the council themselves.
Nothing at all. No, because we don't, we don't have a plan. So we don't have much cost. But then we attach the art. Then we go, you know, there's community spaces grant funders, there's tall communities. This will be a beach and approach and unless someone goes drop in, keep it rolling. But absolutely, I don't think the case of the council not putting their hand in that bucket and space the time.
I might want to ask a question on this.
Sure.
Oh, sure. The skate park.
Yeah.
It attracts all thought from Monmouth.
Yeah.
So can we tap into grants, for example, from Monmouth, maybe order a consultation? I noticed, I've always seen it. I know, but we attract a lot of from Monmouth to the skate park, which in turn then bring revenue into Ross town.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we could potentially tap into that or do a consultation with people, sort of that size of a board.
Two questions in that. You know, can, can we tap into grants in a different county or in Wales? No, absolutely not. And we'll have to use the grants that are available to us. Can we look wider than just the people that are in Ross? Yes, absolutely. We need to be talking to the people who will be using it. That's the locals, but there's also other people. This is about, as you mentioned, economic authority and people have there from Monmouth. Or Carnival New Zealand. Look at, I know, you know, I don't know whether Heriport Skate Park sees it as a, as a policy project for that phase two. Has, has been really successful. And what you find is if you create something that's well loved. So it becomes more, you know, there's, there's lots of opportunities.
They also, it's funny, the police and crime commissioner have seen us grant many of them. And that is threatening friends for certain things like road safety, et cetera, et cetera. About social behaviour, for example.
Yeah.
And cutting down on the crime element and the use for Moss.
All I would say is that the fact that we've got such a wide attachment area. And for this, we'll standard some better state when we go to grant funders. We're able to say we've got, you know, evidence that we're drawing from a much larger area. So some of these funders that have become on the board, we'll see that as a good reason to fund us, which is great. I mean, it's excellent that we've got a hundred and fifty thousand out of charity and a bigger land trust target as a project lead. Which has really put the impetus behind that whole project and turbocharged it. And hopefully we'll see some results in the next eighteen months.
Well, and what, just to add, I'll be finding some of the larger grant funders. It's a lot more now. It's not just what do you want to do, here's your money. You have to really go into detail in terms of the design, the cost build-up needs to be robust. Because you can't say and give you X and then you go back with your X, pay and you have to ask for more money. It's also about how are you going to manage it? How is it going to be sustainable? How is it going to be a long-term investment for me? So this is why this pre-work is crucial. Because we need to put those grants in and be successful. And we, you know, cross projects that I've worked on. And we have, the grant funders and across the board, yes. So we have to.
Thank you. And to put a lot from Andrew's thing, there's a market house where we did go for the lottery grant. There was about four or five years it took to get to the time that we could actually start work on this market house itself. So I'm well aware of the time it takes, unfortunately, to get all those bits in place. If you're actually tender, so you know the costs. And then you can then go to the lottery funders, the, or all these grant funders for it. And so I know it's difficult, that will unfortunately take time.
And the last thing you're on is you put something amazing in and then it's all water. We need to think about these things now.
Surely the costings will be impacted by the history of that piece of ground. It was a tip.
Yep.
It's also got a lake, a pond there that have got dressed in use in. And the history is with Heriport Council and a Jersey firm that wanted to put on a hotel on that, on that piece of land. So you will find a lot of history when you do the research, but it was a tip.
Yeah, and that, that, that was the thing that's come out of the pre-app is exactly that. And, you know, we need to know about credit news, we need to know about working issues.
Financial directors and, and, et cetera.
Yeah.
And lawsuits.
And that's why we do, we now move into surveys because we need them for the planning application.
Yeah, the history of this really is telling. Yeah, the history of this really is tied up with the sports centre. Yeah. Being a ward member, because when the sports centre was on its knees in July 2020, I got involved in recovering the sports centre with a looking at skate park then. And I was hoping that I could combine the two into one CIC so we could have taken it forward that way. But I can actually say to this group tonight, there's 100% political support behind this particular project. It's key because it's aimed at a very, shall we say, neglected group of people. That's the 30 to 90 year olds in the town. We all complain about youth services having been lost in Ross. We complain about the youngsters not having enough to do to be distracted with theirs. You have got the sports centre and they can get involved in that in certain ways in terms of sports activity. But this is a key project in terms of trying as best we can to fill some of that gap there with trying to encourage youth to be active, to be involved and to actually feel that they've got a place where they can go and actually call their own. So it's a key project for me as well and I want to see it go ahead. And I'm grateful that Andrew came to me to actually present it. Thanks, Andrew.